Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the Cedar Rapids Community School District Regular Board Meeting and Work Session. Today is Monday, January the 27th, 2020, so I'd like to call this meeting to order. Could I get someone to have, excuse me, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented, the revised agenda?
So moved.
We didn't have someone read.
I move that the revised agenda of Monday, January 27th, 2020, Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second? This requires, I'm sorry, a roll call, please.
Director Verchak.
Aye.
Aye. Director Ann Holt.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Timinski.
Aye.
Director Porcini.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye.
Next, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Linda Nago for a moment of silence in recognition of a staff member's recent passing.
So we'd like to ask the board for a moment of silence. Jason Klein and Joey Beck are going to speak on behalf of the employee.
We return back to the school board, the loss of another faculty member at Kennedy. We were devastated to have lost Jenny Newland, a special education teacher and language arts teacher at Kennedy. She was one of a kind, she was kind. She loved her students, she loved her role in the school, she loved being a teacher even on the hardest days. I never once heard Jenny complain about a student, not once. She was outspoken about policies and practices, but always in defense of her kids, never in defense of herself. Her room was a reflection of who she was as an educator, quiet, calm, warm. No overhead lighting, just lamps, beanbag chairs for the students who needed them, desks for those who preferred order. Her students could not help but love being with her. She provided for each of them the environment and education that they needed. She knew her kids in every respect, she was aware of all their particular needs, and she never tried to take shortcuts or group kids together. She never wavered in her desire to help her students grow. I personally loved spending time in her room. It was calming and warm and relaxing for me as well. But it was the conversations that we had, the quiet impactful discussions about what we as a school needed to do, or more frequently and more joyfully, the excitement with which she would tell me about what she was up to. She always had joy about what new things she was doing. Taking a leave of absence was undoubtedly the hardest thing she ever had to do as an educator, she was so worried about her kids. We tried to reassure her that we would take care of them, and she knew that we would try, but she also probably knew that we would not be able to do what she could do. Of course, she would never tell us that, but it was true, we knew it was true. And frankly, she's probably too nice to even think that. She probably never even thought such a negative thought, but there's no one who will ever take care of her kids the way that she did, because she cared. So I will end my portion of this with a quote from Dr. Seuss, one of her favorite authors, and from the Lorax. The Lorax was all about saving trees, but as a metaphor here, we think about saving kids. And the quote is, "Unless someone like you cares a whole lot, a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better." It's not. Jenny cared a whole lot, and she made the many lives that she touched much, much better. One of her colleagues, Kara Aspisen, wrote this to me to share. "Jenny would visit my classroom during fall in service eager to talk about students we'd share in the coming school year. 'I'm so excited for you to meet blank,' she'd say, and the conversation that followed was about all the things that I was going to enjoy about the student, what unique contributions they would make to the classroom, even the things that we'd have in common, a love of puns, an appreciation for proofreading, a quirky sense of humor. Throughout the school year, Jenny would certainly support students and teachers alike in navigating challenges, but that came after the enthusiastic introduction. I have learned so much from working with Jenny and listening to the love of her students. It has made me a better teacher." Another faculty member, Ms. Clor, one of our counselors, wrote this. "Jenny was so much more than a teacher. She would shepherd her students with a patience and grace I will never see again. Sometimes I would lose my way, and Jenny's calm, nonjudgmental approach would bring me much-needed perspective. I really miss those talks. She was the kind of person that I looked forward to seeing every day, always a warm smile and encouraging word. Jenny's group of students faced barriers, and she helped navigate them successfully to graduation night and exciting opportunities after high school. I was in an IEP meeting recently for one of Jenny's students, and it took a lot of us at the table to move forward without Jenny leading the way. The student at the meeting had made such growth in just a year academically and socially. I know Jenny is a major reason behind that growth, and that student was just one of the many that would positively impact by Jenny. We'll miss her very much." Finally, one of our staff members, Kathy Klein, wrote. "With a love of a good book and even a bigger love for her students, she was the epitome of grace, gentleness and nurturing spirit, a smile as bright as the sun and a twinkle in her eye, the kindest of hearts, the softest of voices. I will miss you, fellow Kennedy education warrior. I will miss you, my friend."
I've had the pleasure of knowing and working with Jenny Newland since 2011, nearly a decade. Jenny is one of the most caring educators I have ever known in my career. Jenny had this incredible ability to remain calm in all situations, and also keep a friendly and inviting face, even when encountering challenging situations while supporting students with disabilities. She cared deeply for all of her students, and the parents respected and trusted Jenny immensely. Jenny was a very private person, so we may not ever know the far-reaching impact she had made on the lives of many people. For example, on the day before her wake, I had a parent of one of her former students call me to tell me her child wanted to go to her funeral because Jenny meant so much to him and was his favorite teacher. I remember Jenny as a beacon of light for her students. She was a strong advocate and very passionate about education and reading. One especially fitting quote is, "A good teacher is like a candle. It consumes itself to light the way for others." And Jenny's favorite quote was from Dr. Seuss, "The more that you read, the more things you will know. The more that you learn, the more places you'll go." Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mark Musker. I taught with Jenny in behavior areas, and now with autism in our class program of the Spectrum. So I appreciate the opportunity just to share briefly about Jenny and just kind of help with the closure, because it just seemed to go pretty quick. Thing about Jenny, that's already been said, she was so caring, and she had a grace about her that it almost happened, you would think, behind the scenes, because her kids respected her. And she was just, just a great smile.
And I know that it's tough, but please stay strong.
Again, just the grace that came out on those days that weren't so good for some kids.
She will be missed, and it's so glad to hear all the wonderful things she's done within
She was calm and handled it well.
our district, and she will truly be missed.
I remember that Jenny and I did ninth grade basketball, and she was the bookkeeper, I
Thank you.
was the scoreboard guy. And finally, I said, "You know, Jenny, I can't do this anymore. Parents are yelling too much." And so she graduated to varsity basketball, where she did that for quite a few years. And I know we're going to miss her at Kennedy, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
During this moment of silence, let's remember the positive impact that Jenny has had on our students, our staff, and our community.
And tonight, we will be holding five public hearings, and I will take them at the same time. The public hearing are for the gym HVAC upgrades, cooler replacement, and fire alarm replacement projects at Kennedy High School, masonry repair project at Jefferson High School, and roofing improvement project at Wilson Middle School. Board Secretary Day, have we received any correspondence related to tonight's public hearing?
I have received no correspondence related to any of the hearings for tonight.
Thank you. At this time, we open up the floor if anyone would like to address the board regarding any of these hearings. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Next, we'll move on to our superintendent's report.
Well, thank you very much, President Humbles, and we have much to celebrate as a district. And we had a visitor a few weeks ago. Doreen Marvin is our magnet consultant, and she's always a good reminder of our innovative work and progress we've made. But from a national point of view, we have some things to celebrate in regards to our magnet schools. So we have three of our magnet schools that applied for the Magnet Schools of America Merit Award, and three of them have received Merit Award designation. Johnson Steam Academy and Roosevelt Creative Corridor Business Academy were designated as Magnet Schools of Distinction. If you recall, Johnson had received that distinction last year. And in addition to that, Kenwood Leadership Academy was designated as a Magnet School of Excellence. Magnet Schools of Excellence awards are only given to a select group of magnet schools. Those schools are eligible to receive monetary awards and are eligible to be named the nation's top elementary, middle, or new and emerging magnet school. One of the schools of excellence will also win $5,000, and the Dr. Ronald P. Simpson Distinguished Merit Award, which is considered the most prestigious magnet award, so Kenwood is in the running for that prestigious award. So congratulations to our magnet schools, we're very proud of their work and the leadership behind that. And again, thank you to the board for that continued innovative support. Today, very great day at Pierce Elementary. They're celebrating Kindness Week, and it started this morning with a tunnel of kindness, which welcomed Pierce Elementary students to school as they entered the building. The cheers, high fives, fist bumps were from Kennedy High School staff and students, along with community members, Mayor Tom Hart and Officer Glenn of the CRPD here tonight, high fiving. The tunnel kicked off the Great Kindness Challenge that will celebrate being kind to one another with events scheduled throughout the week. And then, Who's Your Neighbor Award. Congratulations to McKinley Middle School's Molly Lamb for receiving the Who's My Neighbor Award from St. Paul's United Methodist Church in Cedar Rapids. The award is dedicated to the memory of Dr. Percy Harris and his wife, Leila. It recognizes special people in the neighborhood that go above and beyond what they are asked to do. Lou Wery of St. Paul's United Methodist Church recognized Molly on MLK Day through their MLK Day Committee, and this is what Lou shared about Molly. On Monday night, we celebrated Molly Lamb and what she has done for her students at McKinley, the extensive amount of her own personal time she spends individually with her students, to increase their chances of success, to listen to their concerns, their hopes, their fears. Molly teaches at-risk students in all academic areas. We are also very excited about her development of egos, education, goals, opportunities, and sports, and after-school program for kiddos fifth grade through ninth grade. Molly does all of this work as a volunteer. She is offering at-risk students an opportunity to succeed, to break away from their social norms, and to show them a pathway of structured goals and success. To educate is to empower. So the award reaches out into our community and selects those that are leading much in the same way as Dr. Harris, by example. He worked hard to establish what is right in the community, just as Molly has. Our award gives recognition to those who are not often recognized but are so very worthy. So please, congratulations to Molly Lamb, if you have an opportunity to see her working really hard, doing great things for kids on her own time beyond her work hours. So I'm so proud of our district and the work underway, so that's all for tonight.
And thank you. And I was going to say, what an amazing school district we have. We're growing. We are. And it's because of the hard work that we have with everyone that is involved, working with our children, with our staff, with our students. So I applaud this district, and I'm truly glad that I represent this district. Great job, everybody.
Yeah, great job.
Are there any board reports?
I would just mention that tomorrow, Director Ann Holt, Director Garlock, myself, and Superintendent Bush will be attending the Iowa Association of School Boards Day on the Hill, where we will be talking to local legislators about our needs for funding and why they exist and how it can benefit students. So look forward to that opportunity.
Well, and I'd like to mention, too, that I volunteer at Hoover Elementary School kindergarten, and I'm having a great time. It's a lot of fun, and it's really glad, it's really great to be back in the classroom, and they're just so tiny. And busy, but I am, I'm having a great time. Clint Stone has been very welcoming, and it's just, I haven't been in the classroom in a long time, so it's been quite the experience for me. Next, we'll move into communications delegations and petitions. Do we have anyone that would like to speak before the board?
I don't have any requests.
Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items the board would like to pull for comments, questions, or for a separate vote?
President Humbles, I'd like to pull the Policy Manual Review and Revision Section, BA 20011/606.
Oh, okay. Anything else? Laurel, could you give us a history, a brief history about this, the policy manual?
And are you pulling this for information or for a separate vote?
For a separate vote.
Both, I guess.
A separate vote?
Actually, there's no vote on this. This is an information item, so I guess, yeah, this would just be point for, okay. So the policy manual review is a routine item that comes to you, if not monthly, at least every other month after the Policy Review Committee has done the completion of the review work. As a reminder, policies are required to be reviewed at least once every five years. There is no requirement for administrative regulations or procedures, which are not approved by the Board of Education, but we do bring them forward for your reflection and guidance. The Policy Review Committee meets monthly, and I'm proud to say that we have done a thorough review. Tonight, we are bringing forward at least, I believe, two policies. One policy, 305, and I can't recall the other one off the top of my head. Is it 604?
602.
602. And so what we do is we bring it forward in the consent agenda. If there are any questions, we are happy to try to address those. They have been vetted through the Policy Review Committee, they've also been through the superintendent's cabinet before ever coming to you, and knowing that you may pull it at any time that you would have questions or want to vote on it separately.
So the reason I pulled this, and it wasn't anything even particularly to do with, you know, the policies and regulations we are looking at tonight, but it was something that came from our work session after last meeting, when we looked at the Board Code of Ethics, and they're not numbered in our handbook, but there's a bullet point says that, you know, as a board member, I should recognize that I should endeavor to make policy decisions only after full discussion at publicly-held board meetings. And so just going forward, I'm wondering if the first reading of any changes that we would have to vote on, you know, could be done outside of the consent agenda. You know, first, the Code of Ethics, unless I'm reading it wrong, makes it seem pretty clear that that's at least what we should be endeavoring to do as board members. But what might be more important is even a small discussion, you know, not just to pass it through the consent agenda, but just recognize that these are policies, you know, that we have, that have been put in place before, you know, that the policy committee has either made, you know, reviewed, or proposed changes to, and even a brief discussion of why those policies, you know, make sense and what impact they would have. You know, some of them are just nuts-and-bolt stuff, but some of them might, you know, make a difference in how this district operates. Hopefully, that discussion, if we have it out loud, would just kind of remove one layer of the process that we go through as representatives of the public and the public themselves. You know, I know before I was on the board, the fact that there was a policy handbook, you know, may never even have crossed my mind, but kind of demystifying that might be something that just kind of helps our communication with the community and just makes it clearer what we're actually doing up here. And so that was just my thought, you know, looking at that bullet point from the Board Code of Ethics, that we should have a full public discussion before making any changes.
I would just say two things on that. The Board Code of Ethics, when it talks about this, the sentence that you're specifically referencing, it is talking about it in a more broad sense of policy, not a policy manual document. It's really talking about it more in the wisdom and the management of district affairs, the policy that the board implements. The other thing I would just say is, it was at the board's request that the Policy Manual Review and Revisions was listed as a consent agenda, because before, it had been listed under Board Governance, and we would get to this section, and generally, there weren't a lot of questions. It seemed to make sense that, because it was routine, because it is very specific in the agenda, and on the cover page, very specifically says which policies, regulations, and procedures are for review, which is, again, another change that has been implemented, always knowing that you could pull it for separate conversations. So either, either way that the board would decide, I would just say that it has been there before, and it was asked to be moved under consent agenda for the board leadership. So that's a little history on that.
Okay, and just with, you know, a newly constituted board recently, that was just my thought on, you know, how we could do our business and how it might change how people perceive what we're doing up here, rather than having it just scapegoat, and, you know, some people might not even notice it otherwise, which, if it's just nuts-and-bolt stuff, might not make a difference, but could impact understanding in some way, so.
So I would just like to just insert there that I think what we need to be mindful of and aware of and respectful of is that when a piece, when a policy goes under the Policy Review Committee, it is visited by administration, it is visited by district council, it is visited by people who work in the district that have, that are like content experts in that area. And I would like for us to be mindful of the hours and professionalism that those people put into their work, and that they put into consideration of policies when they are going before the Policy Review Committee, and it's all done to make sure that we're in accordance with Iowa code. So there's no, there's no, we need to be lawful. We're a governing body, we need to be lawful, so we need to be in accordance with Iowa code. I would just like us to be mindful of that.
I'd just like to say, I appreciate all the time that the Policy Review Committee puts in and understand how much work goes into these sort of things. I'm just trying to do my best as a new board member here.
I'd just like to comment, too, I wouldn't look for a change, but I would encourage all board members to, if they have a question about a policy that they're bringing up, I compliment all of the work that goes into it, but the bottom line is, the buck stops with us. And so it is our duty, if we have a question or just need a clarification, I think it's our duty to bring it forth. But I think the way we do it seems to work all right, but again, with the caveat that take a look at it, and if you have a question, or if someone has brought forth a question to you, that we ask for a clarification, and I don't think it disrespects any of the work that goes into it. Again, it's just us doing our diligent work.
Sure, and there've been, I mean, there've been numerous times, I don't think I've had any questions, this time for policy, but ask Laurel Day. I mean, I will inundate her with questions all day long. Part of being an elected official is knowing how to look at something, say, is this something I need to question? How can I clarify it? Where can I get that information? And then, what can I do to best support the people that have elected me? So I am comfortable with the process that we have, because I'm comfortable with the line of communication I have with Laurel Day. She answers, or whoever is in charge of that piece of policy, answers the questions I submit in a timely manner. I would caution us to be mindful of the amount of time that, as volunteers, we are spending sitting up here, if we're going to be discussing ins and outs of policy, we'll be here for hours.
I just, all I'd say is, I just don't think it would hurt to spend five minutes if there is a policy change that's striking an entire policy from the handbook, you know, just a very brief pro forma discussion of why we would do that.
And you can certainly do that at any time under the consent agenda by pulling that item.
I'm just saying, in terms of, you know, what we went through with that Code of Ethics, and I understand what you were saying about it earlier, just seems like a very, you know, simple thing to do. I'm respectful of everybody's time, but we are elected to make policies, we're a policymaking board, and so that's just my point of view on it.
Yeah, I would, I think, reiterate what Gary said, that as board members, we all take our responsibilities seriously to make sure that we have thoroughly reviewed the agenda and any policy review items that are before us. And it is on our shoulders to make sure that if there is something that we don't understand or that we question, or, as Jennifer said, that the community brings to us, that we do pause at the board meeting and make sure we address that. But I think that's inherent in our responsibility as a board member, to make sure that we come to the meeting while prepared. And if we need to, in a particular instance, pull that aside and look at it separately, that we do that.
And I could appreciate, too, when Laurel sends out our board agenda, that she sends it out far enough in advance, that we do take the time as a board to read it, and she always states that if you have any questions, to contact her so she can get those answered before we have our board meeting, and I think that's important. So I guess my question, Dexter, to you is, were your, were your questions answered as what you were wanting to do with this, with this item?
My questions were answered for me, but I'm still, we're a Board of Education, we've got a
just seems like a very, you know, simple thing to do. I'm respectful of everybody's time, but we are elected to make policies. We're a policymaking board, and so that's just my point of view on it.
Yeah, I would, I think, reiterate what Gary said, that as board members, we all take our responsibilities seriously to make sure that we have thoroughly reviewed the agenda and any policy review items that are before us. And it is on our shoulders to make sure that if there is something that we don't understand or that we question, or as Jennifer said, that the community brings to us, that we do pause at the board meeting and make sure we address that. But I think that's inherent in our responsibility as a board member to make sure that we come to the meeting well-prepared. And if we need to, in a particular instance, pull that aside and look at it separately, that we do that.
And I could appreciate too, when Laurel sends out our board agenda, that she sends it out far enough in advance, that we do take the time as a board to read it. And she always states that if you have any questions, to contact her so she can get those answered before we have our board meeting, and I think that's important. So I guess my question, Dexter, to you is, were your, were your questions answered? As what you were wanting to do with this, with this item?
My questions were answered for me, but I'm still, we're a Board of Education. We've got a Code of Ethics that says to have a full public discussion before making policy decisions. It's a policy manual. I'm just, from a regular point of view, I don't see how it hurts to talk about it. You know, it's, if it's just for education of the public, you know, and instead of saying, I don't want to get in that habit as a board. Like, again, even if it's a three-minute discussion of a very simple policy to where we're saying, oh, nobody had any problems with this thing tucked away in our consent agenda, and so everything's cool, you know, we've done our due diligence. I would rather go the other way and say, hey, this is what we're doing. It's in our Code of Ethics. You know, it's not even controversial, most of these things, but we can just have a very brief discussion. That's just the point of view I had on it, looking at it right there.
I do agree with you, and I think that we do have that opportunity to pull something at any time from the consent agenda for a separate discussion or vote. And any policy piece would absolutely fall under that. But I do think also that, you know, being prepared and submitting those questions ahead of time is incredibly helpful too. So I do agree with you. I think that having it pulled for discussion on the consent agenda is, I'm fine with that process. It's what we currently do.
Right.
I've never had negative feedback from that. So I am comfortable having, do you have questions about policy that's before us tonight?
Well, I'm, to be honest, I'm not even sure if it's a policy or regulation in terms of the collaborative decision-making process. That was, what is it? Is it policies?
Two oh eight.
Two oh eight, so that's a policy, so that would require us to vote. What, not this time, but next time?
Yes.
So I would say that's a policy that we want to strike throughout completely from the handbook. And I'm more or less satisfied, you know, with the answer that I got on that. But if I were a member of the public and I was going closely through this, I would say, why don't they want to, you know, make their decisions collaboratively?
So for point of clarification, I think, you know, I think that's a good point. So for point of clarification, I mean, I think that's something that, when it is up for review and when it is under consent agenda, we could pull that and say, we're not striking this entirely. It's a duplicate that's located elsewhere in the policy manual.
Right.
We're just trying to clean it up because we already have 400-plus pages of policy. So that is absolutely something that is appropriate to pull and have separate discussion, and just point of clarification.
Is that, Laurel, is that policy a duplicate one?
You want to go ahead?
I'd be glad to comment on the collaborative decision-making process. So at the Policy Review Committee, when we were reviewing this particular process, it was originated in the 1990s, and it is definitely something we believe in, but it's so embedded in our practice, it's like breathing now. It's not, we have a lot of committees and a lot of task force and a lot of ways in which we make collaborative decisions. And so it's not a required policy, but it's definitely lives in our culture and how we operate as a district. So it didn't seem necessary, but also when we looked at many of our other policies about decision-making, so for example, curriculum, it's embedded in that policy about committee work, et cetera. So having a separate policy on this seemed redundant. When we looked at the, like, one of your board-appointed committees, School Improvement Advisory Committee, CYAC, it's all about collaboration. And so that is why we recommended striking the policy. It just seemed redundant to the other policies in which we are enacting collaborative decision-making.
We also didn't think that if someone was looking for an explanation of collaborative decision-making, that they would go to the policy manual for that. And again, as Noreen had indicated, it had been around since the mid-'90s. So might have been something that was a...
And I would say that there was a transition, certainly in that era, and other educators at the board table can comment on this. There was a transition from isolated practice and education to collaborative and cooperative education. So I think it was a product of the era, when actually, it's really impacted our practice and now is just part of how we do business.
Just comment that I agree that just because it was back in 1990, it was a good thing. It's still a good thing today. And I, and I think it does value the whole conversation we're having with Dex was talking about, that again, we know it, but the public out there, if they see it posted, or if they read it, say, why are you, why are you moving? They could, they could look at it as moving away from being collaborative. And so I think it's, it's right that we have the discussion, have the discussion.
There is one thing that I think, Director Marshbrack, you've noted that might be helpful, is if we're completely striking a policy, many times consent agendas have a pertinent fact with them, and that is something that it's either purchased surface or something like that. We might be able to do a note about a policy that's being completely struck so that it's on the consent agenda publicly, everybody understands, and just a couple of notes about why we might be striking a policy, if that's the one that really seems to be in question.
I'd just like to say, we spent like 15 minutes talking about the process of reviewing policies, and it took us like two minutes to talk about the policy itself. And so that's what I'm trying to get at.
Sure.
We can have this two-minute discussion. I feel satisfied, it's recorded for posterity, and I feel like maybe it adds something to what we're doing up here.
But you can feel free to do that anytime under the consent agenda because that's, that's the purpose of it. You can pull it, you can discuss it, you can vote on it separately.
Yep.
Anytime.
So have your questions been answered?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second? This requires a roll call.
Director Newman?
Hi.
Director Anhal? Director Garlock?
Hi.
Director Tominski? Director Borchardine?
Hi.
Director Marshbrack?
Hi.
President Humble.
Hi.
Okay, so this is going to be exciting. Tonight's work session is around our facilities update, and it ties directly to our strategic goals of systems and resources and student learning. And I'll turn this presentation over to Noreen and Dave.
Thank you very much, President Humble. It is indeed an exciting presentation tonight, giving you an update really on the facilities master plan from a broad point of view as it relates to our strategic plan. But we're going to drill down pretty quickly to our new project around our new elementary and want to give you a project update. We have some guests who've joined us this evening from OPN Architects, and they'll be joining Dave at the podium. So I'm going to get us started as this relates to our strategic plan work, and then hand it over to Dave and the OPN team. So just as a reminder, and Dave will do the slideshow click here, that these are our four focus areas around our strategic plan. And we're going to zoom in tonight around systems and resources, which is really where our strategic plan work lives for our facilities master plan. And so, thank you, Dave. So if you were to look on our strategic plan, you would see it called out as one of our strategies is that we have a facilities master plan. And with this particular strategy, we actually have resources behind it on our website that folks can actually unpack and look at with the recommendations that were board-approved a couple of years ago. So, go ahead, Dave. So here we are. This is, I'm going to, I'll do this, Dave. So if we were to look at, and we'll click into our, give folks an idea of where they can find our microsite on our facilities master plan. But if you were to look on our facilities master plan oversight, you would see this pictorial view. And FMP stands for Facilities Master Plan. And the board-approved master plan two years ago encompassed three tiers, and those tiers really focused on our elementary schools. And so the idea was over really a 20- to 25-year period, how we would have systems improvement around our school district, focused on best practices and learning environments for children, what our district needs from a learning point of view, and what our community needs, and also from a resources point of view, and how we're being fiscally mindful. But when we look at the tiers on the screen there, what we unpacked was by a needs basis and also by what was predicted from a population study at the time of the FMP recommendations, of which schools where we should begin. So Tier One encompassed Coolidge, Jackson, and it was also recommended to take a look at Arthur, which is on the east side of town. And as you know, Coolidge and Jackson are on the west side of town. So, go ahead, Dave, his next click. So when we broke down Tier One, we also had what we called the first phase of Tier One. So Tier One, Phase One encompassed the west-side trio of Coolidge, Jackson, and Truman. And the idea to maximize resources and also population study, and of course, best practices, was to look at building elementaries that would be, to be able to serve about 600 students. And that would be to encourage, well, we were just talking about collaborative decision-making earlier, collaboration across practices for teachers. We do have schools right now in our system at the elementary level that may have one or two sections of students, which can be, in some cases, really great because it's a small environment, but also really challenging because you're the only one teaching what you teach in that particular school environment. So this recommendation, we've done a lot of deep study around it, and now we're in the implementation phase. So Phase One right now encompasses a new building on the Coolidge site, a new building on the Jackson site, and then also considering when both of those buildings are built, repurposing Truman Elementary. Next slide, please, Dave, thank you. So Tier One, Phase One, these were the systems that we've been considering as we've moved into the phase of this project. So a year ago, really from January of last year to where we are now, this has been the work. Notice what's highlighted at the top, and what we'll zoom in on tonight is the construction planning for our first new elementary of Coolidge. Secondly, has been our communication to the communities of our three schools, Coolidge, Jackson, Truman, and presenting the overall timeline to those particular communities. Boundary and enrollment discussions, family communication regarding boundaries, repurposing, building planning, staffing. We also encompassed a pause on the timeline. This is really important to understand, that we have this Tier One, Phase One right now that will impact three elementaries. But at that particular time in which we've had two new buildings and repurposing Truman, we know that we have to pause and reflect on that first phase and to see how it's been going before we move to the next project. So although on the Tier One right now, it pronounces Arthur, I would imagine in three years from now, we might have different needs as a district based on enrollment, based on building needs. So it may not be Arthur, but that's what the original idea was. So we are prepared to pause on that timeline for determining what the next step might be. In addition to that, in this Tier One, Phase One, we went through a very hefty process. You went through a very hefty process as a board a year ago in selecting an architect for this Tier One, Phase One project, projects, I should say. So OPN was our architect of selection for Tier One, Phase One, and they've been helping us with this first project. And then OPN will continue to help us with the rest of Phase One, which is also the Jackson project. Once we've reached that pause timeline, we'll reevaluate where we are with the whole process and then what our next steps will be when we move on to Phase Two of Tier One. Okay, Dave, if you want to. So some of those bullets, we haven't even gotten to yet. The board will have some decisions to make, including board policy on naming buildings. So notice the language I'm using is the new building on the Coolidge site, the new building on the Jackson site. You all will need to determine if we're going to continue with those names. It was original board policy to name after the presidents, but you know that we have Viola Gibson, we have Wright Elementary, we have buildings that are named after other individuals, and we'll have to decide if that's the direction that you'd like to go or not. So I'm already getting rally cries from folks in our community about their ideas of what to name our buildings. Fun. So here we are. We're going to zoom in on this fun project, our new elementary construction project one. So go ahead, Dave. So as you know, we went through this, you went through this really hefty architect selection process. Again, that began in January, we had the selection in March. And then Dave's going to comment on the money side of things from last year and where we currently are.
Yeah, with the SAVE legislation, as we all know, we were hoping to save legislation, we got it passed in the 2018 legislative session. And well, that did not happen. And then it was brought up in the 2019 legislative session, and thankfully, it did get passed, but not as early as we hoped it would get passed. It was passed on April 20, I want to say April 24th, or I think, or 21st of April. And then the governor didn't sign it until like May 24th, I think it was signed by the governor, which really put a really tight timeline, really for the OPNs, you know, try to get everything done in a time that we still wanted to have with the hopes of getting into Coolidge on the fall of 2021. So, but another piece of legislation that got kind of thrown in there was the peel-off of additional funding, which was very concerning to us when that first was passed because initially, there was a 2.5% peel-off of the current funding for the property tax equity relief fund. And so the new legislation required a additional 1% peel-off to a maximum of 30% over the duration of the SAVE funds. That was very concerning because we were very, wasn't sure if the funding would be there to be able to support our plan as we had, the board had approved. So, I mean, we ran some numbers based on Legislative Services Agency provided us, and we were able to see that based on the funding estimations that they provided us, it looked like we could be able to meet the plan as we had so desired to do as a board, so. Initially, on the legislation piece. So with the SAVE legislation, like I said, that is now is 2051, which is good. And one of the things that we had to do to tap into the additional funding was to pass the revenue purpose statement, which we just did here in November. That got extended, so now that opens up that funding pool. But prior to that, we did some number crunching to make sure that we could do the first two buildings under the current funding formula, and we would have been able to do that without the extension. So that was something that we knew Jackson and Coolidge renovated new elementaries on those sites would be fundable under the current funding, so.
So with that, all of that legislative work around SAVE, it did crunch our timeline. So it has been hot and heavy since June to get things done, but it has been super exciting work. So just so that you know, very early on, out of the gate, again, after the governor's signature in May, we were able to move forward and move forward very quickly. Greg O'Connell is the principal of Coolidge Elementary, and Nick Duffy, principal of Jackson Elementary, as well as some staff members, community members, parent, OPN team, went on what's called benchmarking trips. And they found some really new, fresh, best-in-practice elementaries in the Midwest, visited those elementaries, and were able to take in the things that we liked, the things that aligned with what we believe is best practice. And from all of that information surfaced what were recent priorities as we built this building, which is making sure that it's focused on collaboration and the structure invites collaboration, flexibility, natural light, innovative practices. So lots of photographs came from that, lots of input and ideas, and then brought that learning back to our community. And so invited community input too, but that didn't come till a little bit later after the research was put all together. And then concurrently happening at the same time, were heavy discussions with the city. Think that folks who know the site, and OPN will review this later, we needed to make a decision about where to put the building. So just a lot of collaboration with the city of Cedar Rapids, and thanks, special thanks to them and their collaboration with us on this project. So the next quarter of this work, which was in July through September, the benchmark trips were completed. We finished some site work with the city of Cedar Rapids, and then we got into some focus groups with staff members, neighbors, and the community. OPN facilitated a lot of that work as kind of an outside objective perspective, as well as the folks who were going to be building this project. And again, the community's input pronounced some of the same themes. They wanted open spaces, they wanted connections to nature, they wanted to improve collaboration and flexibility. and flexibility and less isolation, very modern look for an elementary. And that our steering committee, which is really centered on people from the building at Coolidge, as well as Jackson and Truman, principal from Truman as well, central office and OPN folks, took all the input and narrowed down a scope to create drafts and keep things on budget. Lots of on-budget conversations. So then was the grind. And this was, I'm an English teacher, so it's like, draft, get it to a place, get more input, draft, get more input. So the input was coming from our community. We had several community sessions, one down in Newbo, at Coolidge, we had an open house at Taft, and invited all three communities to the Taft location to get input on the drawings as we moved things forward. And so, I'm not going to read all of these, but hundreds and hundreds of drafts. Just a special thank you to OPN for tolerating thousands of emails and phone calls, and meeting with individual teachers with their concerns about their specific programs, and to meet the needs of our children, very open to listening and learning with us, and also knowing education best practice. So, thank you for your collaboration on that. And so, then we get down to this last bullet, which really gets to design and delivery. I would say that we gave one unveiling at the state of the district, if you recall, of the outside view of the building. We got additional feedback at that unveiling and took that feedback back to OPN. And so, got us to the point where we're excited to look at some drawings tonight. So I think our next slide here, we're going to hand it over to OPN, and they're going to give you their perspective and talk a little bit about the actual drawings themselves. So I'm going to hand it over to Roger Worm, and he will introduce the OPN team and talk about our work together.
Thanks, Norine. Along with me is Joe Tersey and Nick DiCarlo. We're about one-sixth or so of the design team. So, we're the lucky guys that get to come and present to you this evening. But there are, there are a lot of folks involved in a project like this from the design team side, as well as you can imagine from the Cedar Rapids School side with your own team that we've met with pretty much every week. If we didn't sit at a table every week.
Two, three times a week, rather.
Or on the phone, or the emails, whatever. It has been an amazing process, it really has. For the first school that you guys are launching in about 15 years, the last 10 months have been phenomenal. The continuity of your team, I keep thinking of this shape of clay, and everybody's pushing it from a different angle, and it has taken an amazing shape over the last 10 months. So, we're excited to be here tonight, tell you a little bit about where we've been over the last 10 months, and kind of map out the next, next several months as we wrap it up. So, the first thing was just understanding the site, where it sits, how it sits, the existing building, how does traffic move around the existing Coolidge, the neighbors across the street, huge, huge factor. How do you put a new building on an existing site where you're either in someone's front yard across the street, or to the neighbors to the east, you're right in their backyard? See, we're always thinking about the neighbors. And then, of course, the parents, they're dropping off their kids. How do you have a secure site from buses and vehicles moving, dropping off at the front of a building? So, so many factors just went into the forensics of understanding that existing site. And that started to guide us in design direction as we started to give this thing a little bit of shape. So, just to clean it up, the existing building, obviously in white, at the bottom of the screen and across the lower right-hand side are the three existing baseball, or softball fields, city property. We've covered a lot of ground with the city, and that has worked in our favor to utilize that portion of the site. Also, understanding the topography of the ground, the, the bottom of that slide is the lowest end of the site, and at the top, on the east side, is quite an elevation change. And that's a lot of dirt to move if you want to try to level up a site. So we looked at how could we use that to our advantage of just taking into consideration how a new building might best utilize the site. We did test fits around the available footprint, knowing that Coolidge needed to stay essentially 100% intact during the construction of the new building. So we did test fits to the northwest, to the east, to the southeast, across the south. Nothing made any sense. We couldn't fit a footprint that made any sense. We certainly couldn't work to the topography to use that to our advantage. And we couldn't break up the building in any way that, that didn't impact your budget. And that was a huge thing. How do you not start swallowing up major amounts of money with multiple phases of work on a project of this scale? So, we started coming up with floor plans that were really starting to drive a shape that fit around the existing Coolidge site. And this was driven by program. And program is where everybody has their, their wants, their needs, their wishes. And it's natural, everything should, as it did, it grows to encompass everything that would just make this facility amazing from every aspect. We also realized we had to make very, very strong decisions, keep our head around budget, schedule, how does this thing look from phasing, how do we minimize the impact across the site during construction? So we did grow, I'm sorry, we shrunk from a large wants and wishes list back down to the true needs, but we still kept a lot of fun things in there. And I think you'll see in a few minutes that what drives us as the, as the excitement of architects is we get to see a project through the eyes of the users, from the educators, to the kids, to the parents, to the neighbors. And when you start to give it shape, it's, it's incredibly exciting, it's rewarding, and the last 10 months have been just phenomenal. So, the floor plans, Joe, you want to walk them through just kind of the graphics of this? We're going to tag team through the rest of this presentation.
So, like Roger said, part of this challenging site was also the challenging program. And so what a lot of schools do is double loaded corridor classrooms walk down the edge. When we went on the benchmarking, what became very evident was that we wanted to kind of incorporate a, instead of that traditional method, we would incorporate learning pods. And so, there are four classrooms that are housed around a common space with some additional spaces like a extra small classroom bathrooms within the pods. So, you would have a first grade pod, and those first graders might never need to leave that academic house. And so what we tried to do is we tried to take advantage of the site and keep all of the public space on the east side, and try and burm it into the ground to take care of some of those double-height spaces, be a good neighbor to the people in the east, and take advantage of it being in their backyard. So, up on the northeast corner is the gym in that kind of red, pink color. Then directly below that is, in that purple, is the cafeteria. And so what we're trying to do is we're trying to team those two spaces so that if people come in after hours, they don't necessarily have to get into the rest of the building. Those are the two spaces that a lot of the public would be allowed into. Then the kitchen's directly below the cafeteria, there's some large public bathrooms, and then kind of our mechanical suite to help take care of the rest of the facility. That area in the green is the office space. And so, we kind of centrally located it. It allows for, as people come into the building, to be a secure entry so that you do not get into the building unless you're checked in. And then anybody within the office suite has the ability to have those people directed to them, or the kids brought up to them. And then as you work to the west, that first smaller area of blue became the preschool. And so, we located up on that corner to take advantage of parents dropping off, and then being directly attached to that front so that there's a good synergy between the office and the littlest kids. Then currently, we're looking at first grade, second grade as it works around the corner, and those two academic houses can either function as a house by itself or in tandem. Then as you work down to the south, what we also tried to do is those spaces to the east and to the north tend to be a two-story volume. But the nice thing about that is when the existing Coolidge comes down is, that will feel like it's sitting in a park. And so that scale will not be nearly as tall because of the distance away from the neighbors. But as we work to the south side, and you can see that dark corridor that separates the north academic houses from the south, those we tried to scale down to be more residential in nature, and they're one-story, but they ramp up so that it has a shed roof, so it starts to feel like the houses, again, just trying to be good neighbors. So in the west pod, that's the caf, the kindergarten, I'm sorry, and that actually will be a storm shelter. So that, that drives all the kids into that space. So we're trying to keep those smallest kids in a, in a location they don't have to move and take everybody to them. And then as you move back to the east, in that orange and dark orange, that's music and art. And then we also, as this project started to develop, we brought in the special needs program that Truman will then lose, and we really tried to accommodate them. So, we spent a lot of time, especially with the special needs program, trying to get that to be in a state that will be more conducive to the needs of those kids. So, then as we move up to second floor, the, the plan kind of simplifies a little more. So, you get third, fourth, and fifth in those academic houses. You can see that two-story space on the west side, that's really just a mechanical space. And then the nice thing about that shed roof on those two pieces is, the music and art will then get a volume. So instead of it being a nine-foot, 10-foot ceiling, those ceilings will have 17 feet of space available to them. And so, it's going to help with sound in the music room, it gives a lot more light in the art room. And then as you move back to the east, there's a central stair that takes you down into the main corridor that feeds that public space. But at the top of that stair is the media center. And that media center, when we get to the 3D, you're going to see it has a great connection back into what we're kind of calling the park. And then also, one of the things that was identified as we did the tours was that there's a great synergy between a makerspace and the media center, and so we incorporated that makerspace just to the southeast corner of the media center. And then we also found a way to incorporate a projects room so that the teachers can sign out that space when they're doing large format projects, or if they're doing FOS kits or whatever. And so we really tried to build in a lot of flexibility within the plan. And then finally, when we look at the site, so this is, the site is where we're currently sitting. You can see that all, we tried to start to separate traffic patterns. So, to the south is the bus drop-off line, there is a dedicated entrance for the kids coming off the bus that come in from the southeast corner. That's where all the back of house, there's going to be a dock there that'll feed the kitchen and take care of the mechanical. You can see between those two fingers, there's going to be a dedicated playground for the smallest kids. So we'll have age-appropriate playground equipment in there. As you work around to the west, that light green block is going to be the way that we take care of the onsite water. So, there's a lot of concern by the neighbors about runoff from your property onto that street, and it's caused a lot of problems. So we're going to start taking care of that a little bit. As you move up on the north, in the northwest corner, that's where we relocated the ball fields, that was part of the agreement with the city. And then as you work back on that line, you can see there is a drop-off, a pull-through drop-off, that working in conjunction with Greg and the administrators, and how we'll make that really fast flow for the kids to get in to the building for the preschool. Then as you keep working around to the east, that dark blue, that dark blue is the playground area for the 1 through 5 kids. And then what we've done is we've gotten about 100 stalls worth of parking, which is what we were asked to do, that kind of sits in that parking, or in that park. And then we'll get soccer fields up to the northeast corner. So we've really tried to incorporate play spaces around the school.
This is a nice graphic that really shows how the shape of the site and the existing footprint of Coolidge drove the new building's footprint. That ghosted image in white is the existing Coolidge building. And we, we looked at a lot of different options of how to move around that building and just look at different designs. But, as I said about the clay, the input on this thing has been phenomenal. And what you're seeing is true collaboration from neighbors at neighborhood meetings, teacher meetings, we had open houses, and then a lot of input from, from internal. So it's been a, it's been a fun run. So, that will fire up the big engine. So this is a 3D walkthrough around the site, through the building, and it'll work.
Justin's just giving us, here it is, here it is.
So, what you're seeing is a very high-level view from the northwest right now. So you start to get a, this is after the existing building is obviously gone, with the new, the new ball fields installed in the northeast corner of the site, I'm sorry, the northwest corner of the site. So it's been a balance of how do you give building character, some aesthetic with color and materials, that are also good, good neighbors, that feel right in a, in a residential neighborhood, because it is a big, big building in the scale of a residential neighborhood. So as you approach the building, you have the pre-K drop-off, and then you start to come up to the main entrance. The gymnasium is to the left, the brown box is kind of the foreground of the gymnasium. Go on up a little closer to the front entry. So it has a nice sense of presence, a nice sense of entry when you park out in the, the parking lot and you come up to the building. The fence to the left, that's what separates the main entry from the outdoor playground. We're looking at different ways for that fence to work, what, what level of transparency do we want it to have. As we looked at the budget, again, back to the materials, how do we have means and methods that enhance the constructibility of the, of the facility? So we're looking at precast concrete, which speeds up the, or shortens the timeline for the construction schedule for big, high bay areas, and then more conventional construction out through the academic wings. Want to just back up and kind of go all the way around?
Then we've been working really a lot in conjunction with buildings and grounds to look at materials that not only are aesthetic, but are also going to have longevity, because we're trying to do a 100-year building. So, the base of the building has kind of a buff-colored brick. And then up on the second floor, in an effort to make sure we're on budget, we've started looking at doing some metal panels. And so, we'll be able to play with that color of the metal panels. And then we just started playing with scales of how do we make those windows feel a little different than the wall, and starting to take care of massing by changing some materials, colors of material, not necessarily materials.
I'm noticing that graphically, the building looks a little distorted, a little bit stretched out. So it's not quite as long and lean as it, as it appears up there. This is where the topography of the site really worked to your advantage, because now at the west end, southwest corner, you get a nice two-story classroom wings with windows all the way around. And then as we move up to the east, the big tall areas, the two-story media, makerspace, the commons, and the gymnasium, they're now sunk down into the grade, six or eight feet or so. And that just helped really compress the height of that building to the east. The loading dock here, right in the foreground, is nice because it kind of buries itself under that south entry. And then the school bus drop-off entry is that little gold band there, kind of in the middle of the image. So, should we go inside? Let me know if you're feeling queasy. So, stop right there for a second. So one thing that we saw on our benchmarking trip was this, this sense of entry. We all go through a front door, grocery store, shopping center, whatever it may be. One place that we went to had this little mini door, and every darned adult that was in our group went through that little mini door.
Eric Christensen, Eric Christensen, Eric Christensen.
And it was cool, and it totally made sense, especially for an elementary school. It's, it's all about that experience. Why not start it at the front door? So we're, we're bringing that idea forward. Go through the little door. Yeah, there you go. So now you're coming into the main commons, the lunchroom area. And what you're seeing, looking straight east, is kind of that high wall. But we're putting windows up high so you get that nice morning light into the space. And then the wood frame up above is the media center with the makerspace behind it. But it's all about getting daylight into this space, creating a, you know, again, that sense of entry, but scale. How do you bring materials in that, that have touch and color and feel? And as we move through this space, you'll see different textures that we're using on the wall, just to enhance that, that user experience from the elementary school children's perspective. And then as you look back out to the west, you've got the, the big windows. So on that wall on the right, Nick, there's a wall that's, it's tactile, it has three-dimensional feel to it. feel to it, and that's where we can hang coats before, after they go out for playground time, before, after lunch, I should say.
We really worked hard to try and take some of that inside and pull it out. So, some of this feel for the lower-level kitchen up to the media center is kind of a reflection of that outside. So, we're pulling that brick on the first floor end, and that'll become a block, and then, that metal becomes that wood, because we have wood accent pieces on the outside. So, we're, again, trying to pull the inside out.
So, we'll go upstairs to one of the learning pods here. You know, even when you get to the top of the steps, what a great way to picture-frame the neighborhood to the south. Let's go down the classroom wing first. Sorry. At least we can go through walls and floors with this program. So, we're starting to lay in these, these different layers of graphics now as you walk through the space. How do you have branding and help with wayfinding and break up the scale of corridors with windows and texture and color?
We're also trying to use interior glass to pull the inside, or the outside light into multiple spaces. So, rather than it just being within this corridor, which will help that corridor feel shorter, because you've got that introduction of life at, light at different levels, we're actually trying to borrow that light all the way into the spaces inside the corridor as well. So, that's why there's glass on the inside walls. And so, this is that common space in the, in the family room that we've kind of dubbed it, that the four classrooms will feed into. And so, the kids will keep their coats and their book backpacks and everything out in the common space. But then, we have this great kind of collaborative space inside that will have different furniture, so that the kids can go out and do small group learning, or they can have multiple classrooms come out and maybe do a presentation. And then, again, we're trying to get that idea of pulling the light through to multiple spaces. So, we get the outside windows that feed the classroom, but then, you get that borrowed light all the way into that collaboration space. And so, we were really trying to get that tie from exterior to interior.
For those of us that grew up in the era of double-loaded corridors with a classroom on each side, this is a clean peel away from that line of, line of educational environment. Over the last several years, elementary schools has, have gone to this, this plan, this approach to, to their teaching environment. And I think as soon as you experience it, like we did on, on benchmarking tours, or as we have seen all around the country, once you see it, you'll get it. It is an amazing collaborative environment. The teachers in those spaces love it, the administration loves it. So, it's been a proven plan, it's a proven design that, that is working all around us. So, we're excited to see it happening here with Coolidge.
So, we're just trying to change the materials and, and change the color, so that, again, that long hallway does not feel quite as long. We're trying to do things to pull you into the pods to the south, to start to express different areas, so the nurse being off the corridor and off the main office, so that's a way into the main office as well. And then, we're also trying to take advantage of spaces that are kind of found. So, under that staircase, we're looking at trying to do a little, a little space where kids can get away and do reading, or do small group work, and again, still have that connection
So, then, our last view is, as you come up to this balcony and you look out over the entryway, you get, you get the feel of that volume of space, the amount of natural light that comes into the space, and then, the logo on the far wall. Then, as you move into the media center, it's, it's an exciting space, because you essentially have daylight on two big walls, plus the wall behind you, a shared light, borrowed But this view right here, the way it's picture-framed, it'll be a great space for teachers and students alike to kind of perch up there on that cantilever. So, that's kind of the high-level view of where we've been and where we're headed here in the next, next eight weeks or so, as we wrap up design work. Love to take any questions if you have some.
I, well, first of all, I want to thank you for the work you put in developing this plan and moving us forward, and using the best options that enhance safe, that, that for safety for our, our children, innovation, educational facilities, for our staff and our students. And you've been very mindful of your work, and I think it was nice, because I had the opportunity to go to the open houses, and I thought it was very important, to listen to the folks in the community that live in the Coolidge area, and listening to their feedback. And also, you considered the recommendations of the Facility Master Plan Committee and the Facility Master Plan Oversight Committee, and that's something that we've been working on for over three years. So, I, I appreciate that, too. And, and the board is happy that the Facility Master Plan Task Force was comprised of community members, neighbors, businesses, business members from all over our community, dedicated to helping our community in growing. And I especially appreciate that you've taken, under advisement, information by the MOU between the district and the city regarding the traffic patterns, the bucks, bus access and walking paths. This is a well-thought-out plan that will help us move forward, and I thank you for that. I really like to look at this school.
Thank you.
Any other board members?
I have a, I do have a couple of things. First of all, just going back to the funding, Dave, does the thirty percent peel-off, does that, does that go into effect with our current, then, save plan, because we asked for the revenue sharing?
Actually, it started this year, went from two-and-a-half percent this, last year, to, so, three-and-a-half percent peel-off this year. So, it, it's dependent on whether or not the save revenue grows by two percent or more. If it does each year, then that one percent gets peeled off and put into the, and it actually started this year, even though the existing had already, is good through 2029, they actually started it this year.
Okay, so, it really wasn't based on us with the new revenue. Thank you. Can you, with the architects, can you give us any specific, and I hate to put you on the spot, but any specific ways that the public input meetings that we had at Newbo and at Coolidge, from that had affect, anything from the input of those meetings, something that might, would have had effect on the, on the design or design changes?
Yeah, one of the big ones was, a couple of the community members, one of their biggest concerns was that the water that comes from the site really impacts that street. And so, we've done some things that are going to try and help mitigate that. And so, the big, the biggest one is, right now, all the water that sheds off that side just sheds right into the street. And so, that dry basin, what that'll do is, it'll take a rain, I think, a one-inch-per-hour rain, and it'll maintain, so none of the water that comes off the site will go onto the street. So, that should alleviate a lot of that. Then, the other thing we did is, once we put the bus lane in, we actually put a couple inlets, so we're going to pull water from the street onto that dry basin. And so, we're hoping that that alone will help the neighbors who were really, really concerned about it. One of the gentlemen also let us know that there's a spring on the site, and we did find that when we did our geotechnical survey, but it, it has helped us inform that design, where we're going to do a couple of things that help water management on that kind of southeast corner as well. And then, I think one of the other things that came out was just that all the neighbors were looking for us to be good neighbors. And even though, I think, the original concept design, we were trying to take care of that, I think what we also started looking at was materially, how can we start to relate to the, to the neighbors to the south? And that's why we went to that wood siding look. And so, it hopefully will have a much greater feel to those neighbors. And then, once we get onto the north side, again, because we're so far away from the street, it can start to have a little more of a, commercials are wrong, sorry, but a regular school feel, and just that distance is going to help.
I appreciate the comments about the water, because that was, again, another question that I had, but as, continuing with that, that southeast area, or the east area, is, is part of that, part of the building then going to be subterranean? Is it going to be built down?
No, actually, what we did is, in an effort to balance the site in terms of not taking soil and moving it off the site, kind of one of the things that Roger alluded to was, actually, it's going to kind of give the building a little more prominence, because we're taking a bunch of the soil from the east side, and we're distributing along the south. So, there's a twenty-one-foot change of elevation from the south, or north, or southwest corner up to the northeast corner. And so, that's a lot of grade to account for. And so, we've really worked with the civil engineer to kind of find the right point to put that site. And so, then, by using the dock, that takes advantage of it being a little lower and, and naturally taking care of it. So, it helps you and your program, it helps us with how the site's working. And so, we should import very little soil off the site, and actually, we've found a couple of ways to keep all the soil on. So, we've really worked hard to have that. One of the things Roger alluded to is, this has been very challenging, and sometimes the best design happens when you have those kind of restrictions, because it really makes you focus on what's there and how to make it work the best. And I feel like that's what's happened so far.
And pardon me if I, if, if you've already answered it, but, well, part of the building, my concern is, we've had some, we've had some problems with some of our buildings that are below ground level, with moisture and mold and, and so on. And then, when I hear that we've got this grade level and water running down, my concern is, do we, are we going to have a moisture problem in some of these areas because of being below ground level?
Yeah, so, we did dig in the gym, so I'm sorry, I didn't quite answer that enough, but those are all precast panels. And so, that system itself really lends itself to kind of protecting against water. And then, we've looked at details to actually waterproof that surface, so that we won't get water infiltration into the gymnasium. And that all will be at one level, so that floor plan, the nice thing about it is, that first-level floor plan, that's a consistent level all the way around.
Between the perimeter drainage, waterproofing, and then just grading around the building, we should mitigate a lot of the water issues. And that's, that's the issue of getting water into the building from outside. But then, just the interior condition space will also keep that. I always think of the damp basement syndrome, we've all been there. You just, you don't have that in this type of construction detail. So, unless there's some profound event, I, I think we'll be okay, we should be okay.
When they constructed this building, they used, in some of the areas, a term called French draining, and it seems to have been very effective as far as mitigating water and so on. Is there any possibility or capacity to be able to do something like that in some of this?
Yeah, and that's what we're going to do on that east corner, we're going to bury a drain tile all the way along there, and then, there'll be some introduction of rock, so that as water comes against the building, instead of getting a real heavy static pressure load, it, it dissipates because of the rock and drops in that tile, and it'll get taken out.
I'm done, thank you, thank you for your work.
Sure.
Could you, we go back to the entrance, could we pretend I'm a, I'm a visitor? I want, I want to go into the entrance, I want to enter this building as, as a visitor. I, yes, I do want to go through the kid door, because all the cool kids are doing it, apparently. And, so, if I'm visiting, what's, what's the protocol for me to get into the building?
So, as soon as school starts.
Yep.
Up until school starts, that vestibule's open.
Okay.
As is the bus drop-off, as is the preschool drop-off. Some of the other doors could be locked, and that's all electronic, so you can program those. Once school starts, the outside vestibule door will be free open, but the interior door
Okay.
will be locked.
Yep.
And then, you're, you get into the vestibule, and then, there'll be an A-phone that allows you to talk to the receptionist. She will verify who you are, then they let you in, and then, you're held in the office until you're cleared to go into the school, or the kids are brought up to you. And so, the intent is that you will not leave the office and don't have access to the rest of school until you're allowed in there.
Excellent, excellent.
And then, all the doors will lock at school, starting at eight-thirty.
And then, I had a question about, no, we talked about learning houses, and, and it seemed kind of like we were going through entrances, and they were their own kind of area. Can those learning houses be locked during, like, lockdown drills and stuff?
Yes.
Are they, are they a separate facility?
So, the intent is that there's a pair of doors that screens you from the public to the academic houses, and then, each of those academic houses would lock as well.
Awesome, awesome. And then, I just, there, it looked like there were sightlines from the classrooms to the small group spaces, all of those small group spaces has sightlines.
Yes.
I'm assuming.
We're trying to get as much
I don't know how else that would work.
view into the collaborative space as we can from all those rooms.
Perfect. My last question is kind of silly, but I'm wondering if there's going to be any sound dampening between that second-floor story metal paneling in the building, or, because I'm, I'm concerned that rain would be really loud.
Second floor, in that common space?
Outside wall?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, the nice thing about how we're going to treat the construction is, there is a consistent wall that runs from the first floor to the second, and it's a block wall with insulation, and that insulation will actually act as a real sound dampener. And because of, it's on a vertical surface, that sound will not be, because it's got to hit it from an angle, it won't be very loud.
Okay, good, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. I think one of the, the problems with some of our current district buildings is accessibility. So, is this building completely accessible in all areas?
It is.
Okay, perfect, because that's definitely a problem that exists right now. My second question has to do with the carbon footprint. Was there any thought put into this during the design process to make the building more energy-efficient, to lessen the carbon footprint from the previous building? Can you talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, so, we went through energy analysis with a group called Willdan, they used to be called the White Group, and they do an energy analysis that's run through Align Energy. And so, what we do is, we actually tell them, we show them the floor plans, we show them the elevations, they build an energy model based on what we give them. We talk about our values of all the different materials, we talk about how often it's being used, and operationally, where different areas are, and they build this model, and then, we can tell them different mechanical systems, which is the biggest driver. And so, right now, this is planned to be a geothermal building, and then, rather than do heat pumps in each room, we're going to kind of do a hybrid system that's becoming a little more popular, where it's actually a fan coil. So, it takes out a lot of the maintenance for the buildings and grounds guys, but it still utilizes that free energy from the ground. So, we pull up heating and cooling out of the ground, it's transported in the building, and then, we distribute it through pipes to the individual rooms. So, each, each room is a zone, which is very efficient, because if those rooms aren't being used, you can dial the heating and cooling back a little bit in each of those spaces. Then, we also are looking at using LED lights in all of the spaces actually now, which have about a third of the burn rate of an incandescent bulb or a fluorescent bulb. So, our lighting package actually is very energy-efficient as well. So our lighting package actually is very energy efficient as well. We're doing a system where we'll do occupancy sensors, so if the kids aren't in the rooms, the rooms will go dark. We bank the lights. We really, one of the things OPM really prides itself on is trying to be as energy efficient as possible. And in the last round of schools we did, I think our average is about 60% better than code. So we're hoping to be better in that in this building.
Very good.
Yeah, we're really proud of our energy modeling exercise that we do. We'll put that up against anybody. The amount of work that goes into that from the engineering side, it's everything from lights to fans and how much energy does it use, but it also looks at the first cost going in. What does it cost to buy that light fixture? And then the life cycle cost of, how long will it last before you need to replace the LED bulb or the fixture entirely? So there's a lot of math that goes into it, but it all distills itself down to the right answer for first cost, energy use, and life cycle.
Okay. Thank you.
I had two questions, but Director Garlock beat me to the carbon footprint, so thank you for all those considerations. I think that's really important. My only other question is the grade of the roof. So it's a flat roof for the most part, or is it just a pure flat and there's a slight grade that helps with, to keep water from pooling or collecting or damaging the building?
So the main roof, the black roof that you can see there, is called a flat roof, but they're not ever flat. So there's a minimum slope to it and that, you can see those kind of white boxes, that roof pitches to those, those are the roof drains. And so that is, actually, it's a very energy efficient and it's a pretty tried and true method. Then the shed roofs actually slope down to a gutter and drain system on the south side. And so that's a more traditional, like a two and 12. And that, to someone's point, I can't remember who, that actually is a metal roof, but because of, again, how we put the insulation right under that roof, that sound is going to be mitigated quite a bit. And on this end, there's almost an attic space up there, so there's a space to take advantage of that sound. And then the only ones that really have any true kind of exposure to the, to that rain would be the art and the music, but we usually, well, we don't usually, in this instance, we're going to use an acoustical deck, which again, will then knock down that sound even more.
Quick follow-up to the water runoff piece of it. So that inlet, not inlet, but that field that you have that's basically to help do that, is that designed just to tile away into the sewer system at that point, sanitary sewer?
Yes.
Or is it designed to slow down the absorption of water?
So what it does is, it actually slows down the absorption of water. And then it is tiled into the existing stormwater. And so what happens is, that will fill up and as that system is full, it'll just sit in your basin. And then as the water clears that, then it starts to release that water. So the intent is that that will never be wet for more than 24 hours.
I'm looking at the sloped, south-facing roofs on those two peninsulas.
Yep.
Is there any potential for solar collectors there? Was that considered?
There is potential. We, back to that energy model, we model it on just about all of our projects. And for schools in Iowa, we're not finding that it's got a great payback on it just yet. If there was an incentive, you know, from the company, there'd be definitely an opportunity for it. We just haven't been doing it on public schools yet.
Another question or comment, I've got to go to my Fayette background. Looking at the two baseball fields, or ball fields, are those baseball fields?
No, not sized for baseball.
Aren't they softball?
They're area softball.
Softball.
Okay. My concern is, it looks like you're hitting into the parking lot.
Yeah.
I have some questions and like, some general questions about SAVE. What Cindy said about solar panels, can SAVE money be used for solar panels?
Yeah, it can. SAVE and PEBL would be helpful.
Any sort of energy efficiency regarding the buildings? Okay. What's the budget on this building? Is it still projected over what it was originally projected when we were first looking at the facilities master plan?
Yes.
Have we, and this is something, you know, perhaps we should look at going forward because the costs were a big driver, it seemed at the time, that the previous board used in justifying moving forward with building new buildings instead of keeping old buildings and retrofitting them as necessary. And so I would hope that going forward, we would, if we project buildings to be over the cost that we thought they would originally be, we do some sort of comparison between those costs again. If we want to be fiscally responsible, I know we're getting a significant, you know, sum of money from SAVE over the next 30 years, but it's still my belief that we should use it as responsibly as possible. The cafeteria, is that just with those big glass, you know, windows in front? Is that, you know, what we want to do in terms of safety, just having all those kids behind big glass windows gathered in one spot? I know it looks cool, but...
Yeah, there's a certain amount of reflectance from the outside, so it's not transparent where you can just clearly see into the building. And then also, going back to the solar, we're looking at different ways to reduce the amount of solar gain into that space as well. But from the safety standpoint, it's line of sight and visibility.
I'm just, maybe I'm not understanding, so, but just having it, glass windows, I assume they're not bulletproof, you know?
No.
But, and so just is that the best way? Do we have elementary schools and, you know, schools right now where you can see all the kids from the outside of the building now?
Well, I would say, certainly in the benchmarking trip, that was true of a lot of the cafeterias, it's big broad windows, seeing outside, having access to the outside, light, et cetera. And also, safety is far beyond just what you just brought up as bulletproof. Safety is also, the number one thing that we have found in research is helping kids feel safe. And when kids feel safe and connected, then they are more likely to do well. But absolutely, taking precautions of outside intruders is absolutely part of the scope of the design. Some of the reflective glass that Roger just highlighted is part of that concern. But what drove this, from our benchmarking trip as well as knowing what we want for our kids, is them not to feel that they're boxed and locked in, but rather access to the outdoors and access to light. And so the more congested you get, a large group in a small confined space, that can actually increase anxiety with kids, especially younger learners. And so we want them to feel happy and supported and certainly protected.
Okay. Is there any more public input, you know, scheduled to look at this building now that we've got this 3D design or anything?
In regards to, well, here's the piece, is that was part of all this six-month process. And now what we have to do is go for construction bids if we want to stay on schedule. If we want continued input, that's going to delay us. And so that was the purpose of all those community sessions along this scope of work. So the tweaks that we could make at this point in time would really be about colors, scope of work, maybe, maybe some materials, but probably not the overall site itself and the layout of the building. But we certainly, we changed the color actually of the building based on input we got from State of the District as well as at the three elementaries, input from those community sessions, from the three elementary input sessions.
Okay. I had a general question about secure entrances. Is this the type of entrance that was done, I believe at Washington recently with the double doors and then into the office?
Jefferson as well.
Jefferson as well?
Hi, Watthe Two.
Kennedy.
Okay. What is the status of all of our buildings in the districts in terms of these types of entrances? I know we don't have one at Grant Wood.
I'm going to invite John Galbraith to comment on that of our current status of secure entrances.
So we currently just have the four buildings that were mentioned, the three high schools and then Hyawath Elementary, or the three, or four buildings with secure entrances currently.
Do we think that those are important, having secure entrances like that? Do we think it really makes a difference? I mean, we're obviously trying to put it on this building. It seems like a good idea. Is it something we should be prioritizing ahead of other things? For example, in the SAVE legislation, there's a tacked-on part that says to do security of buildings before athletic fields and athletic complexes. In my opinion, I would say, why wouldn't we do security of buildings if we had the money before anything else if we think that is a difference maker in terms of the security of students?
And there's also safety in regards to those largest arenas. So Kingston became a priority for us really about safety. We needed to reconstruct for safety reasons for really our attendees there. So safety was a driving factor in that particular decision, and we did use those funds to support Kingston. But absolutely, it's a priority for us. Some of the complexity with our old, old buildings is, some of our middle schools, the offices are not on the main floor. The offices are on a second or even a third floor. And so what we do is, we secure that badge entry. Building's locked unless you have a way to get buzzed in.
Do they have double doors or just a single door?
They have multiple double doors at the middle school. I'm just using the middle schools as an excuse.
A door and then an entryway and then another door.
Some of them... No. Some of them, it's just a buzz-in entry and then you're at the stairway and that's your access.
I've become familiar with in terms of what people are trying to do in terms of secure entrances, but I'm wondering, and I guess at some point, there will be some discussion about middle schools, but what could we do in terms of secure entrances there? If there's anything we can do to make them more secure if we have the funding available for it?
And I think that's something that we can talk about and discuss, but in interest of time, I'd like to kind of move, not that I'm, and I understand your concern with the security, because we want our children to be secure in the schools. And I know even the school I go to, I have to buzz in, and I think that's something we can work through. But what I'd like to do is, if there's another question in the interest of time, because we have some other business to get done.
I did have a couple more questions that I received just before, you know, I came in from a community member, specifically about the ball diamonds. Does the district have anything in terms of temporary ball diamonds for the community to use in the terms of construction setup?
Excellent question. Yes, we do. And so we worked collaboratively with the city and then identified a site. Those will be at Taft, and we will have temporary ball diamonds at Taft, so we wanted to keep it on that site of town, especially for the ball clubs that are using those city diamonds over the year. And then what might happen is those temporary diamonds might become permanent, I think, at Taft, depending on how much they get used, and which, so those will be used until this site is secure.
Okay, and then the same question Gary had was brought up in terms of the size of the diamonds. Are they going to be playing into each other, facing each other, how they were? And it looked like there was more space on there, so I don't know if it's just the way it's drawn, you know, in this model.
I think it was, yeah, a draft as a placeholder, and so we'll definitely have to look at the scope of that and where they actually go and how they're...
They're going to be a baseball or something guy, but that was brought up. So...
The way that the ball diamonds that are currently behind Coolidge now, those are T-ball and coach pits only, so they're for the youngest kids.
Gotcha, so you don't need as much space unless you get a real slugger up there. And then in terms of traffic, do we have, I know this is, you know, a better way to feed them in from one side and push out on another side, but do we have a traffic study in terms of number of cars on the road, what it's going to look like?
So they're currently in the process of doing that traffic study? They haven't completed it yet, but they're doing that in conjunction with the city?
And then with the traffic, one concern that I've had with newer, bigger buildings is, if there are more cars on the road, you know, just making sure that it's safe for kids walking to school. And as a bigger point, I know a lot of people drop their kids off at school. Are we doing anything to, you know, moving to the carbon footprint thing, thinking about the well-being of kids, encourage kids to walk to school? I know Coolidge is probably, a lot of our neighborhoods are in a process of change where there are, you know, older generations moving out and younger families moving in, and so...
Pointing to the principal in the crowd, who's done a lot of encouragement, a lot of, he's got a lot of walkers, I think, in this particular neighborhood.
I would say Dexter, we try that. We try to encourage as much walking as possible. We have actually two different areas where there are crossing guards set up that can walk kids from across First Avenue, closer to Cherry Hill across, and then we also have a crossing guard that comes from Stony Point. And so we have a lot of students that do walk, and so we encourage that. Haven't had as much of a walking school bus as maybe some areas have. We still have a lot that are dropped off and picked up, but we do encourage them to do that from the other sides of the building too. And so that helps with or kind of relieve some of that congestion that's in the horseshoe in front.
The before and after-school program is very popular.
Yep.
And so a lot of folks are dropping off daycare before school and dropping off after.
And so that will definitely be something that we'll be looking at as a new procedure when we are doing our drop-off and pickup plan for the building.
Yeah, you guys have got a pretty big population already in terms of students, right? So it's not this huge increase if they move to 600.
Yes, we have about 500 students that are already at Coolidge.
Yeah, I'm more concerned in the future if we're going from 350 to school to 600, what's that going to do to a neighborhood potentially if we're not, you know, really considering those things? So maybe it wouldn't be as big of a difference.
And that's why the traffic study will definitely be something that will be helpful for us as we're looking at that and planning that.
And a lot of the questions that you're surfacing are exactly the questions we want to tackle on that pause on the timeline as we move to other projects.
And one of the things that we did do is, we had a very conscious decision to separate the bus drop-off from the other. And instead of using the enter from First Avenue and exit from First Avenue, which is going to cause a lot of cross-traffic, that moving it down hopefully will slow everybody down because now they're not trying to beat the guy out, he's trying to pull in. And so we really were pretty thoughtful on how we were going to do that site access for vehicles. Then the other thing I would mention is, the new zoning code requires a lot of bike racks. So we're working a lot of bike racks into the design.
Thank you so much. Oh, was there another question?
I'm going to do this, just to keep this real quick, but I am very concerned about that we be good stewards and of conservation and so on. A year ago, I talked with some vendors at IASB, our fall convention, about solar panels. And there were some great deals then where companies would go in and they would write grants and you could get rebates and so on. Going back this last year, those grants, the federal grants and so on have been taken away and it's not as enticing to do it. And I think that's a shame that we didn't have, the incentives really would have helped someone move forward, but now it's almost, it is prohibitive in cost. And the odds are brought up without it too, insurance rates that also would be impacted because those solar panels, hail damage and so on could impact your insurance rates and so on. So I wish, Bush could bring back some of those incentives.
One last thing. In terms of, do we know what we're looking at in terms of busing? If Truman Elementary is closed and some of them are sent here and some of them are sent to Jackson, you know, what percentage of those students would be even eligible for bus trips?
So right now, how many buses do you have coming to Coolidge? Two. And I think Truman is potentially two. So depending on, as we look at the boundary study that we'll be doing, as we look at repurposing Truman, that will help determine, we'll be using our transportation data to also help drive some of that decision-making.
I'm just concerned, and I just want to say for the record, because the percentage of students on free and reduced at Truman is much higher than Jackson or Coolidge, and so it seems if we're shifting transportation costs and time onto those families, there's potential equity issue there.
We provide transportation for students, and so if they need to be transported via bus, then we provide that for them.
Are they going to be, is it going to just be, no matter where they are, regardless of distance from the school? I just don't know the distances involved in these schools.
So if the student is, if the rezoning for a student from Truman is, say, now projected to go to the new site at Coolidge, then we would provide transportation. If the family chooses not to attend and they're permitting to a different school, the burden of transportation is on them. Also, if they don't fit the policy of the certain mileage that we have, and they want to have their student transported, there is a fee for that. But it's... But it's also, Dave can comment on that fee.
Yeah, that, well, right now, the distance is two miles for elementary and three miles for secondary is what the rule of thumb that the code requires for transportation, and we follow that. So.
Okay. I, like I said, I just, I was looking at those numbers from the book fee table, and the percentages at Jackson and Coolidge are much lower in terms of free and reduced than at Truman. And the west side, this area is probably, you know, has the least percentage just as a whole of free and reduced. And so as we move into different areas of town, I don't know if that would be something to consider as well. Because it's not only just the money and the cost of getting to school, but it's the time out of the day to get on the bus or travel farther to an elementary school. And so that's just a concern I have.
One of the other things is if you qualify, we had the paid busing model that Noreen mentioned, but that also, if you are a free student and you want to do paid busing, there's no charge.
There's no charge.
On that front. So, and, but it's also dependent on whether we have room on the route to do that. We probably wouldn't send out a special bus just for all paid busing, you know? But if there's room on the route that we're doing that, then yes, they can ride for no, no, no cost. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll move to the Board of Governance. We have a request for the School Budget Review Committee for Special Education Administrative Costs. Are there any questions from the Board? This requires a votes, voice vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign. Thank you. Next, I would like to inform the public that we will be meeting in an exempt session following our adjournment. And this item is listed on your agenda for informational purposes only. So what we have left, I'd encourage you to take a copy of your school calendar, and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.